So it's Tuesday, February 20th, and this is a meeting of the Southborough Planning Board. And because we are all on Zoom, we have to do roll call attendance. Latrell here.
Stein here.
Houlihan here.
Demoria here.
So we have a call warrant present and we're ready to roll. So should we start just going through? The bylaw?
Yeah, so everyone's familiar, everyone's up to speed on how we got to this point. Is there any, are there any questions on that? Okay.
And Emily is here and she's the one that put the bylaw together for us.
Hi Emily, thanks for coming.
My pleasure.
So Emily in, in us is with Innis Associates Limited. And she is a sub consultant for Bowler Engineering, correct me if I'm wrong, in order to help draft the bylaw for the MBTA communities.
That's correct.
And Emily, the town planner, just so you know, and maybe everybody, because nobody has their title there. So and Colleen's my assistant and Mimi is the chair and we have Jessie and Marnie and Debbie DiMoria as members. Sorry, Marnie, just want to make sure, because Emily hasn't met any of us.
Okay. Who's going to be the master? Are we going to kind of, this is a working session, so can we make changes on the fly?
I was assuming we would.
So will someone share that? I can do the PowerPoint, but I'll let someone else do the bylaw draft.
So that, so this is the, the like memo page, the beginning of the bylaw. So we can move to the, there we go. There, is that what you were looking for?
Yeah, perfect.
Is that big enough for everybody?
Mm hmm. Yeah. Good.
So Karina and I met on Wednesday, Thursday, each for about four hours and then today for a couple of hours. And we've almost finished going through the bylaw.
Thank you.
Um, so these edits that you see were from Karina and I's discussion and Marnie has made some edits also. So the first thing was definitions and Karina and I felt most of the definitions unless they were very specific just to this section should go in the definition section of the code 174 dash two.
Yep.
Um.
Agree.
And then the next thing was that this gets added to the districts enumerated in the code. It's an overlay.
Sorry, what does that mean?
Which?
Districts enumerated?
Yeah, it's the, after the next section in the, in the under 174, after definitions, it lists out all the districts, like residential, downtown district.
Oh, thanks.
So this is added to the end of that.
Got it. What's MCO D stand for? Oh, now I see it. Got it?
So Karina and I also took a, an M out of there. It was MCMOD. He thought it would be better, shorter, but open to discussion on that one. And then, um, under once, so first, first things here are just that are going into the regular code and not just in the the overlay section of the code. So under site plan 174-10, the last thing on there, we're adding this overlay for, for under applicability for site plan review.
And if you don't mind me jumping in briefly, just, okay, I did put all multifamily development. I didn't know if you had discussed a threshold. Some communities are choosing site plan review for X number of units or more. So in the absence of that discussion, I just put it all, you know, all multifamily development within this district for the site plan review, but you do have the option of thresholds if you want them.
Yeah, I think you had 10 and we, we took that out, so.
Okay, all right, that's fair enough.
All right. And then the next thing there was under outdoor illumination, this was added to the moderate ambient lighting zone, the same as village business. But we, Karina and I took that out and figured that that would, the lighting would comply with the underlying, underlining zoning district. Because some of his, some of the districts are residential, which the moderate would allow more lighting than is allowed in the residential. And then some are in more permissive districts, which would allow more. So we figured it could just go, could just follow the underlying zoning.
Did you add that text? You should, you should make, if you're relying on the underlying zoning, you should just make that clear within the text of the zoning as you get to site plan review.
Okay. Unless, I mean, everything's up for discussion. If everybody agrees with that, we can move on if they like, like what, what was removed out, which is shown over on the.
No, I think it makes sense to, to defer to the underlying zoning.
Okay.
I agree.
And also some of these things like Emily, we just mentioned, show up as we go further down the text.
Right.
All right. And then the next page, we get into the details in the overlay itself.
So just before you move on, Mimi, just to clarify, this 174-10.3, that kind of aligns itself with 174-10.1, which is the Business Village District section right after site plan. And then we have the 174-10.2, which is the downtown district section that was added. Now this will be the 174-10.3 related to MBTA Communities Overlay, which aligns itself after the site plan section, just so it's clear, because it's a little confusing at first if you're not used to looking at it. Thanks.
And actually, to that point, because we've, we've done that with each district, do we need a statement that the overlay defers back to the underlying district zoning? Like, I don't know if we need, I, I know that Emily, you made that comment to make sure it's in there, but I don't know if we actually need that explicitly stated because of the way that our town code reads and how it is underlying.
The, the reason that I mentioned it is that an overlay district generally, if you choose to develop under an overlay, then you do not refer back to the underlying zoning, because you are now subject to the rules of the overlay. So if you specifically want to refer to something in the underlying zoning, you should put it in, in there.
So isn't that in the next section, Establishment and Applicability, isn't that number two?
Yes.
Does that, does that cover that?
Well, so what it's saying is in this case that you are, the overlay district superimposed exactly number two there. Regulations are, uh, so yes, the way this is written now, you should be okay for the uses, dimensions and all other provisions, essentially you're saying, except for, in this case, it says a use is allowed by right or by special permit. You just want to make sure that if there's anything specific, like the lighting, that maybe isn't clear, that there's some difference in the underlying zoning, you just want to call that out, right? So if somebody's looking to develop under this, you just want to make sure they know where to go. So if you anticipate that you have lighting regulations that will apply and those lighting regulations are governed by the underlying zoning, then I just recommend that you call that out. So they're not trying to look in two to three different places to understand what the rules are, that's all.
Okay. And I think, did we, we put that someplace, didn't we?
Yeah.
Karina, under the site plan?
Yes, it's under site plan.
Perfect. That would be a perfect location for it.
Okay. All right, so.
Quick point, Mimi, so that the board knows when Bowler Engineering ran the compliance model to test that we got the density in the districts that were proposing, that everything worked using the underlying dimensional criteria. And that's why we're doing that, Emily.
Perfect.
Okay.
Okay, so the first section, purpose, we, the only change is where we took out the multifamily out of the, um, the beginning, out of the name, up, under A, purpose.
Yeah, you have to go up.
Further up. There we go. Sorry, I jumped you down for a second, but, so in this section, we, because we thought MBTA Communities Overlay District would be less of a mouthful than MBTA Communities Multifamily Overlay District, we took out that in the extra M. And then we took out some of the, some of the things that were, I thought, a hard sell under the purpose, like the purpose for doing this was to preserve open space. Like that would get a laugh about that, or to, or to increase the municipal tax base. So just a couple of things we removed from there, but everything else is pretty much the same. And then the second section. So, um, oh, and we'll see this below in the definitions. Currently, we have a definition for multifamily housing within our code, which is two units or more and the state is three units or more. So we added a definition specifically for this overlay under definitions and then we defined what it is here in this paragraph.
So when you say definitions, it was added to 174-2 definitions?
Yes. So under that, we have dwelling multifamily already, which is two units or more. And we added dwelling multifamily within an MCO D and added this definition.
I think he just needs to say of two or more buildings, just a little typo there.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Is that, so a building with three or more residential dwelling units? Or two or more buildings on the same lot? It's not.
Oh.
Hang on.
Oh, that's right.
I think that's.
Oh, it's a, oh. I believe that's correct with the two or more buildings.
So that, that would be, you could theoretically then have two sing detached single families by this definition. Does that meet multifamily housing? By the state? Because if the state's saying it's three units.
The two single families have to have two units each.
So.
So that's four units.
That's to me, so I think we should strike two or more, or two or more buildings.
That's, that's, that's the state definition. That is, that is the 3A definition. And what it means is either a building of three units or it's two buildings each with more than one unit. So your minimum possible is a three unit or two duplexes for a lot under that definition.
Just adjust the definition to say.
You want to keep your definition to be the 3A definition. Yeah. You want your definition to match 3A. For this.
If you look at the end of that sentence phrase, Jessie, it kind of says that. It says on the same lot with more than one residential dwelling unit in each building. So instead of saying two buildings with a minimum of two dwelling units, it says with more than one unit in each of those buildings, just a different way of saying what you're saying. Tomato, tomato. I think that's what you're meaning.
I think it's a little confusing this way, personally.
I concur, Jessie. Unfortunately, the state overrules our decision, I think, on that one.
I just don't want you getting flagged for something unnecessarily. That's all, that's all, that's the only reason I'm suggesting you use the state's definition.
We had to read it a few times ourselves to be like.
Yeah.
What does this mean?
Me too.
I.
All right.
And then the next section is the same. Except for changing the the acronym there.
So can you scroll back up, Colleen? Because I think you went too far. Sorry, just go back to B, yeah, the top. That's good. Thanks.
Oh, and then, so C, the water resource, so lower impact development will have to be reviewed via the site plan and we, we can't issue a special permit for it. Is that correct, Emily? No, no special permits?
That's correct. I had spoken with HLC about this for another project about a month or two ago, and I actually spoke with them again today. Their recommendation is for things like the lower impact development for the water resource protection. Different towns call them different things, but they recommend that if there is criteria associated with those, that can be moved into the site plan approval process for the multifamily, that that's the best way of doing it and that it not be a special permit.
Okay. Okay, so I think that we, under site plan, we did reference all of these. The question I had was the water resource protection. I, I don't know that that's ever been utilized and maybe if we have, so Southborough doesn't have many multifamily housing developments and the ones that we do have, most of them are 40Bs. So I don't know if, if we start having more than, than this will kick in, because it has to do with nitrogen load or something. Is that correct? So I don't know if our ZBA has, so currently it's a special permit under the jurisdiction of the zoning board of appeals. I don't know if they've ever issued one. So that, yeah, so it would be interesting to know what that would entail to add that to our site plan review.
And you don't have to add it to your site plan review. Again, different towns are doing different things on this, but if you wanted to, it should definitely be site plan review rather than special permit. And if then you don't want it, you just note that the multifamily in this overlay district is exempt from those requirements. So you can do it that way as well.
Yeah. I just don't know what they are. So I don't know what the ramifications of doing it either way would be.
Emily, have you encountered something like this where it's under a, like a zoning board of appeals jurisdiction, but the planning board?
Is now, so, yes, I have. And that's where suggesting bringing it out of the, for the purposes of this overlay, not for everything, but for the purposes of this overlay, bringing it out of ZBA jurisdiction and into planning board for the, either the water resources or the lower impact development or both. And bringing it into the planning board's site plan review is, is what I'm understanding is the recommended strategy.
Right, because lower impact development special permit is already under planning board purview in the code. It's just the water resources one isn't.
Exactly.
We were concerned if that's legal to do, you know, based on the code.
It should be fine, because you're bringing, you're actually bringing in effectively as a separate process. You're saying here are the criteria under this water resources protection for the purposes of this overlay. We're using the same criteria, but we're moving it into the site plan review process under the planning board. So and it might be worth a discussion with the ZBA just to, you know, confirm your understanding of, of what that entails.
Okay. Could that be allowed just for the multifamily and then anything else can still be under the ZBA?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, good question.
So I guess my confusion is calling it out specifically like this, like B, since we already have the water, lower impact development is part of a site plan. I don't understand the reference to the special permit. It just seems confusing to me.
So my understanding was currently there's a special permit for the lower impact development.
Right.
Did I, in general. So this is just saying you can't do a special permit for the lower impact development. So, so this section is basically saying, I'm just going back to my copy. Here is you're establishing in B, you're establishing the applicable, the district and the applicability of the district. And so in this section, we're saying that here's how the underlying zoning works under two, but you've got a couple of components of your zoning. So you've got major residential development, that's A, we're saying that doesn't apply to this overlay district. Then you've got the lower impact development and we're saying the criteria can be used as a component of site plan review, but it can't be a special permit. And then C, requirement of water resource can apply. You can choose to reword this. I put it in here because we're already talking about the applicability of other zoning, that there may be other ways of saying this within the zoning, but just so you know where it came from.
Got it.
So do you recommend that it be here and also referenced under the site plan section?
I think if you put the criteria in the site plan set, you can, I mean, this sort of points them to the criteria. You could do it another way, which is to say that neither of these apply the way we did with A with the, with the major residential development. So you could say 10.13.3 doesn't apply, 13.4 doesn't apply, and then just take those criteria and put them into your site plan review. That might be another way of doing it and perhaps less confusing.
Um, I, I think that if we take that information redundantly, put it under the site plan section, it, there's room for error in the future. If something changes in one and it doesn't change in the other, if there are any edits made in the future, if you have one section that already gives the criteria referencing back to that section is simpler, I think, more, less room for error.
I agree with you.
Then the only word I might consider changing is to change the May to shall. Again, we hadn't had our conversation yet, but the shall would strengthen it. May gives an option. So if you definitely want to use it, then I would change it to shall. And if you want to leave it open, then you could leave it as May, but I would do, I would do shall for both of those.
Yeah, I think that actually helps.
Yeah, lower impact development shall be used as a component of site plan review and then the planning board, as you've just done, shall not require.
Okay. Yeah, one is in C?
Yeah, C, you've got two and B and two and C.
So in B, the requirement, lower impact development shall be used as a component of site plan review.
Exactly.
And then, but the planning board shall in both instances.
So in the first line up at lower impact development?
Yeah.
Why am I not seeing this?
You're under B, no, no, right at the top of the page.
Lower impact, A, oh, I got. Oh, shake. There you go.
Thank you.
It's always so much fun editing on, in a group.
I have a delay. It's weird. Yeah.
Yeah, if I talk over you, any of you, I apologize. I also had a delay for a little bit. It seems to have settled out now.
And there's one more May under C after, on the second line, the last word. There you go. And then, then number three, the sub-districts. We took them out. I don't understand why they were there. Maybe you can explain.
I think they were on the map. No, if you've, if you've taken them out, you don't need them. I think they were on the map that I saw. So if you've changed the map since then and discussions with Bowler, then you can absolutely remove the sub-districts. There's no requirement.
Just to clarify, the generation of the overlay areas came from several areas identified as six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 21, et cetera. And what happened is as we moved through fine tuning what areas we were going to use, those particular areas stayed, like area six, area seven and area 21. We really want to make those, you know, MCO D1, MCO D2, MCO D3 and start from scratch. I, I think, Mimi, I think that was the point, to not have like one map that says area six, and then all of a sudden, an area seven. And area 21, we're like, well, what happened to, you know, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12 in the between?
Well, so I think that um, that's fine, but under sub-district A, there were three different areas, because there were three different zones within that, that district.
Yes.
So if we want to refer back to the, the underlying district, we don't want all of sub-district A to have all the same dimensional standards.
Okay, so that explains a lot. When I pulled these from the, the model that Bowler gave me, 6A, 6B and 6C all had the same dimensional standards in the test. And I think seven and 21 had all the same dimensional standards except for the front setback. So that's why they were grouped the way they were, was based on that model. So again, this would have been at the end of January. So if you've changed the model and what you've been doing since then, then yeah, you're going to have to change the sub-district names and the dimensional standards in the table of dimensional standards, which is section E.
So they, so they ran the, the compliance model based on all the same dimensional standards for, for area six?
At the time that I did this, yes. Again, I don't know if you've made changes since then, but this is the time I drafted this out. I think that is correct. Let me just double check the model I have from them.
If that's true, that's a problem.
Again, this was a couple of weeks ago, so.
And I think that's why she called them A, B and C, was because she was trying to get the, I'm going to pull up the GIS and show you. Yeah, well, she told us that we could keep our underlying zoning. So why would she change it to run the model?
These subjects, sub-districts were based on the swapped out parcels that we recently did. So I think we're still talking about the original overlays that we gave to Bowler to run the model with. If I'm not mistaken.
So this is, this bylaw is based on the, the first.
Iteration.
Yeah, this is based on the January 5th model that I have. Yeah.
Yeah. So this area is, we do include these that I'm going over. Yeah, so it's, so it's industrial, that 42, Business Village, the pinky stuff, and then Res B.
Right.
Or all within that six.
So this, yeah, this.
So what Emily's saying is that she used the dimensional standards that were used by Bowler to run the compliance model. But those aren't. But those aren't. The dimensional standards in the um, underlying zoning.
Okay.
So that, that's a. It may be, she may have used the most restrictive. Cause I think this um. I think that's what's listed there in the in the table that we removed is the um res B.
Yeah, so further down in the draft bylaw, Emily, under section E, the development standards.
Yes.
We removed that because we were going by the underlying. Zoning criteria.
So then you'll just need to circle background to Bowler and and um check the running the model. Cause those, those, I just double checked. Those are what I pulled from the model I was given from January fifth. So if you've made changes, you'll need to let them know.
So I ha- I have the, she did send me the model. Um.
Okay, so if you look at zoning input summary.
Yep.
That orange tab, that will show you what they modeled. Yeah, so there you can see uh the the different um. Uh, parameters, the zoning parameters that were used for each of the uh districts.
Oh, okay, so. So that's, that is the same as res B, which is the more restricted part of the other two zones that make up that. Six area. So we should be fine as fire is complying, but the question is, so do we want to. Make everything comply with res B within this overlay or do we want to refer back to the underlying zone?
You'll need to model what's in the zoning to show um H L C when you submit your application.
Oh, okay.
They'll be, they'll be looking at, you'll, you'll be submitting the model, the map with the the um districts. Um, the shape files for the districts and you'll be submitting your zoning. So they're going to want to look and see that those are similar.
Mimi.
Yes, sir.
If we, if the modeling was done on the most restrictive zoning. But the bylaws says underlying districts. That should come, that to me would complete intuitively anyway, would comply with the state.
Right. I I would think so. I don't think it would make us out of compliance, but Emily's saying that if we're gonna. Rely on the underlying zoning, that's what we have to submit to the state.
When, when you say that's what we have to submit to the state, the compliance modeling has to matter?
Yeah, yeah, I think so.
So when you're looking at this, what I'm finding is um. Area six C, the business village. Has the same, oop, what am I doing there? Um. The top three look the same, and I think she took this right out of the zoning. I can pull that up and look. Um, I have the the, our bylaws open, let me um. Yeah, so the it's, it's. One, two, three, these are all the same setbacks and uh floor area ratio. Um, minimum lot size. I mean, everything looks the same.
Yeah, but they're different, they're different districts.
Right, so there's six A industrial that's at six, and then there's the residence B at six. And res, and area C is business village under area six. So she has the three um zoning. Um. Districts that are included in the overlay.
Yeah, but they're, but the dimensional standards are all that of their recipe. Like industrial is a, a four, three, five, sixty, a one acre minimum lot size. Two hundred feet minimum frontage.
Oh.
Um. So the industrials correct, area seven and twenty-one have the minimum lot size of forty, forty-two thousand five hundred and sixty.
Right, oh yeah, so those are the industrials, so that would be six A. Which is showing the the res B zoning input. Instead of the industrial.
Gotcha. So, so under um area six, you want to put. That it's uh. Under residence B is, even though the underlying zoning can be industrial.
So that's the question.
I gotcha, okay. I'm just assuming that she, okay. We.
So for example, under area six A industrial in that first square on the left. Top left.
Yeah.
Area six A, it says minimum lot size is twenty-five thousand square feet, but if you look in the code. Industrial, our industrial district has a minimum lot area of forty-three, five, sixty.
Right, that's what I just said. So if you look at seven and twenty-one, they're both industrial, that's, those are the.
Well, what, what's the problem with just resubmitting this and rerunning it? I mean, it seems like a pretty minor mistake to me. To just rerun the compliance with the correct.
I, I think we wanted, um, I remember our conversation back a little bit. And because that area is mostly residential. I think we decided that the residential setbacks and stuff would apply. So residents to residents, even though there's a house on an industrial piece, those setbacks wouldn't. They wouldn't fit that neighborhood. So I think we decided to ask her to do all these three under residence B. Does anybody else remember that?
Did it happen within the last five minutes?
No.
Then I don't remember.
But I do remember having that conversation. So I, I, that's the only reason I think I, I remember her, um. Yeah, cause, yeah, cause that's the mostly residential area down there.
So can I just restate, there's two options here. We either update. The compliance model to reflect the actual industrial zoning here.
Um, business village.
In business village, because right now, um, the draft bylaw reflects. The actual underlying zoning. So we would need to update the compliance ma- model to see if it matches the bylaw.
So the bu- the bylaw reflects um, the zoning. The zoning that. Well, the zoning for, so. Area seven and area twenty-one are fine. They're, they match the underlying zoning. It's the area six A, B and C, there were three different ones, but the dimensional. Standards that were input are all res B.
So why don't we go back to section B establishment and applicability? And uh in section two for underlying zoning, clarify which districts are ex- are. You know, not the underlying zoning.
You want me to pull up the um bylaw again?
So I think, so then we would put the. Sub districts back in.
I think we would put the sub districts back in.
Would that accomplish that? Emily, put the sub districts back in and then those. Six A, B and C would all follow the res B.
Perfect.
Yes, I think if you put that in, that would work.
Okay, tell me where that is. Let's see, I'll stop this shit.
You want it to not follow the underlying zoning in area six, it'll just be straight res B.
Right.
So there's no. If you put in dust, like, yeah, I get you, okay.
So that's the only sub, su- sub zoning or subsections that would be still, would be included, the six A, B and C. Cause seven, what would then be area two and three, now known as seven and twenty-one, would stay exactly the same.
Can I keep the zoning there is all the same?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Show me where that is.
So that's under B. Um. Three.
B three.
And so the sub districts were removed, so it's a.
It's a edit somewhere.
It's an edit.
Yeah.
So you are still going to need to define the sub, so you. You've got the areas that you just talked about that you want to put under residence B, but then you've got the other areas, your area seven and um. Uh, what is it, twenty-one? So you're still going to have to define them somehow, right? So if you have a sub district. A, which is the way it was set up, it doesn't have to stay that way, or if you have a sub district, six A, six B, six C. Then you still need to define the remaining land somehow. So even if, so the, again, you know, you could. One option is to keep the table of dimensional standards, but just make sure that the standards reference the underlying zoning. Um, but you can't just have a sub district day and then like, and everything else, right? If you have one, you're going to have to have the other. Cause people need to know where they are within the overlay and what applies to them.
Oh, now I'm confused.
Well, we got confused, Mimi, when we first looked at this um under E, the development standards in that chart.
Right.
Because it said sub district A and it had area six A, six B, six C. Well, really that would be, you know, if, if the area half a mile from the train station, we call that area. One. Under area one. Um. If the planning board wants. Anything in area one to follow residential B dimensional requirements. Then that chart. Shows that. It just doesn't say residential B, it says sub district A. I don't know if Colleen can go to that chart for a second. Part E on page six.
And Karina, that's a really good point. I just put the areas in there so you could tie them to the map. But you can call it whatever you need to call it and take those out because you'll have a map that has. A district and you can call that. District one, if you want, or sub district one. You don't have to then say six A, six B, six C unless you're trying to differentiate them. I just wanted to make sure you could see what was there versus what was on the map.
Oh, okay. Yeah, and that's what I was thinking was the district, now they're calling it district one, two and three. Um, district one can be the underlying zoning of residential B and the other two can stay the same, correct? Okay.
In theory, but we have to make sure it's named so that it's not confusing. So if we say. M C O D one. Right, is the overlay, is the sub district. I know, I'm just trying to, because it. We got confused by this by. The numbering and. We just have to make sure that how we label this, it's, it's consistent and clear, so. Um, a sub district really relates to what the underlying zoning is, correct? So if we call the area by the train station. M C O D one.
Except for that area does not.
Right, um, it wouldn't be, so it call it area one and the sub district has three sub districts. But you don't want to keep the industrial and industrial park underlying zoning, right? You want to make it all res B. So it's not underlying zoning.
Well, so why don't you, um.
We, it's hard to mix it, like you're calling the other two's underlying zoning, but under area six, which is near the train station. We're calling it.
Res B.
Res B. Which is not underlying zoning. It's the majority underlying zoning maybe, but it's not the underlying zoning.
So why don't we just, um, we can call it out then. So it would be district one shall be consistent with the res B. District um. Two, which will be area seven. Um, shall be consistent with the industrial park and. District three. If I, I'm, everything's buried here, hold on.
Which is area twenty-one.
Which is industrial park as well. So I, I mean, it might be just as good to say, you know, district one. Is, is res B and then the two other districts. One and uh, two and three would be industrial park and we could call out each one. Sound okay?
I don't know if the other two are just industrial park. Are they only industrial park or are they industrial and industrial park, they industrial park?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
I have this one map if you want to be clear.
Is that where you're loading? Colleen, you're putting up the map?
I was go- yeah, I was going to, let's see.
Okay, this is, I think, the only, this is the only real sticking point, I think, because. Well, I'm not going to say that, because it could be other.
So we had, we had a hard time. Trying to get our mind wrapped around this.
Well, I'm still concerned that what we were told was that. The model, compliance model worked with the underlying zoning. I had no recollection of that. It would all be considered residential B in the tra- in, within a half mile of the train station.
I do recall having that discussion because we didn't want industrial park. Um, setbacks to be in that residential area.
Well, it would only be for that one lot that's on the other side of the track, so to speak.
I like where we're settling. The compliance model appears to have been run with residential B, so I think that's all okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So everybody agrees on that.
Trying to figure, so under the underlying zoning, how would we, how would we fix that to reference that? Sub district A. Isn't necessarily the underlying.
I, I would just.
For res B.
To me, it looks like we need to stop calling them the areas and start using district one is. Applicable to residential B for this purpose of the MBTA bylaw. Regardless of the underlying zoning. And then you can state it differently on district two. And three, which I, we just verified, so these are all industrial park. And that piece up here is industrial park, so those two are correct.
So I, uh, my opinion here is that. You add three paragraph, you add three statements there instead of. This chart, because we already have what those zones are in our. Zoning section under one seventy-four dash eight. So instead of the chart, we say. One, so, you know.
District one.
District one. Um, shall. Um. Follow the criteria, the dimensional criteria of. Residential B. Right? And then you say pa- next sentence. Us, um, area two.
District.
And where do we, where do we say that?
Um, wherever it was saying, either underlying zoning or under, um, I think you have to say it earlier, under underlying zoning. Right, under B two. Right, where the sentence.
Is there, other than district one, do any of the others not follow underlying zoning? So why don't we just say with the exception of district one?
Right, that's another way to do it. Instead of saying district one has this, district two has this, district three has this. You can say underlying and district one shall be residential B, shall follow residential.
Right, with the exception of district one, which is residential B.
We're losing you, Karina.
Oh.
And um, I just think it's much clearer if you literally. District one is this, digit- district two is this and district three is this, but that's my opinion. If, if people come in and ask those silly kind of questions, what does this mean that district one is different?
Yeah, I kind of agree. I'd be very explicit. Yeah, I kind of agree. I'd be very explicit. Sorry, Jesse. Can you imagine what this town meeting is gonna be like?
That's what I'm afraid of, I, I am totally.
That's gonna be.
The longer and more complex this is, the worse it's gonna be.
Right, so. Um, Colleen, if you go back to section B two. Just for a second, right there. B two, underlying zoning, so if you read that underlying zoning. Um, it says M C O D is an overlay district superimposed on underlying zoning districts. Regulations for use dimensions and all other provisions of the town of Southborough, governing the respective underlying zoning district shall remain in full force. Except for the uses allowed as of right. Or by special permit.
Yes, we need to change that.
So. What it's saying there, that paragraph is saying that right now it's underlying zoning. Right?
Except for your multifamily use. In other words, it's set it up for a change of dimensions or a change of provisions. For the multifamily use, that's what the overlay is.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. So now you need to set the standards for the multifamily use, which is what the rest of the bylaw does.
Uses that are not identified are governed by the requirements of the underlying zoning district.
And I would take out the or by special permit since you're not doing any special permit uses, just make it cleaner for you.
Yep, that's deleted, I think.
No, that's just a comment.
It's a question like, I didn't think there was any special permit in here, but.
Some, some communities are doing uh, uses by special permit, I wasn't sure if you were or not, but since you aren't, it should come out.
We're trying to go as simple as possible.
I completely agree with you, one hundred percent.
So Emily, I think. What would the regulations, so this is. In the underlying zoning, the M C O D is an overlay district. Is an overlay district period. Um, the regulations for use are as follows. Right, and then district one, two, and three, and we label it, does that sound okay?
Well, so this paragraph is just establishing the relationship between the overlay district and the underlying zoning, right? And then that's where, hang on, I've got to find it in my original draft. Um, and that's why uh, the three, so. You've got this overall establishment and applicability section, that's B. Um, of that, one says how the, how your um. Uh, M C O D district works. The other says, okay, it's, it's an overlay district, so it relates to underlying zoning. And then the third piece of that is you have sub districts. That's the line that, that you took out, um, and this is what's happening with those sub districts. So you could add your, these sub districts do this under that missing, uh, under that now missing three.
So where, where would I put that then, uses?
Um, so you keep going down, keep going down, because you're still in two there, right? Underlying zoning is two. The sub districts are not underlying zoning. So you wanna, you wanna, you want to put them in under, so see where you've got C there?
Yep.
So now after that, you want a new line three, which is going to come out to where the underlying zoning is, and you want to call that sub districts.
That should be in the tracking over there that it was deleted.
Yeah, I couldn't find it in my version either. I couldn't find the deleted section.
Might have gotten deleted accidentally before the tracking started, I've done that before. So, so yeah, a three and I've got.
Now you go left.
No. D, D, D would still be under number two, you want this to be a new section, it should be three.
So go up right under your review button at the very top of your word document, you see an arrow to your left.
An arrow to my left.
Yep, under review, there's a word that says review. Up at the top of your document.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yep, the air, oh. Which just happened to that, no, I didn't want you to click on it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go back to home.
Yep.
Now go back to review, if you go right under the W, there's a little box with a left arrow. Yep, in that. Nope, nope, nope.
Under review.
Right under the W, in line with the review.
Easy.
Under the W.
Go over two more.
It, it's looks like a paragraph with an arrow to the left, a blue arrow to the left. Yes, that's how you tab left. To create your number three, but now you've deleted your. Number three down below. I, I. If you want to give me mouse control, I can do it.
Okay. I'll be fumbling along and I.
Sorry, my control nature type A personality.
Alrighty.
Um. Uh, just, so you keep sharing your screen, just give me mouse control.
Okay, I gotcha, um.
And then I take over your mouse and just will make the edits.
Can you do that? I don't.
Yeah, if you, you still have to share your screen, I'm sorry.
Okay.
And, and then. You have options.
Where, where am I looking now? Options up top?
Um, in your zoom screen.
Okay.
Um, under share screen, there's a little arrow up and you should be able to say, um, give mouse control too. Because the problem is I don't have this latest version with your recent edits, so unless you want to email that to me. If you can.
Host only, who can share?
Yeah, I missed this. It, it's actually showing up in the one you sent us.
No, but all the edits she's made this far.
Oh, right.
Karina, I don't want two versions of a master document.
I get you. I'm gonna just quickly email it to you.
Okay. Sorry, guys. That's by MBTA by law.
So I guess when Mimi and I were looking at this, we were under the pretense that the underlying districts. Were what? Being held. Under there, because they had said the density worked for those, so. That's why we struck that. Chart in this.
Now I can't find it.
On the OneDrive, Colleen. I believe you saved it to the OneDrive.
Yeah, OneDrive and then my desk. Right?
So I should be able to get onto the OneDrive, right?
No, that's not it. How do I find the reasons? Yes.
So open Word. And your most recent document will be at the top of the list to reopen.
Okay.
So just open it straight. And it'll say recent documents and it should be the top one. In the list. They're losing things.
This is recorded, right? So we could always go back.
Yes.
Why don't I just pull up the, the most recent that I have and we can go back, we're not that far along in the document.
And we'll just use one document up to that point and then. Go back to the other.
So you guys can see it.
B three.
Why is it, oh, because I didn't. You can see my screen, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
A, are they district number one?
What's the wording? Comply with underlying. Uh, residential B underlying zoning?
Um, yeah, residential B zoning, I, I wouldn't put the underlying. Because it's not all underlying.
Um, you may want to. Clarify that it's the dimensional standards that you're complying with for uh, Residence B. I'm assuming that Residence B also has additional uses and et cetera. But it's a, it's a dimensionals, as, as I understand your conversation, I might be wrong, but. Yeah, it's the, it's the dimensional standards that you're referring to.
Is it just the dimensional standards? Do we include like illumination though? Like illumination is?
So that's what I wanted to.
Yeah.
Yeah, so what, what other things, uh, be, be specific about what applies to this, in other words.
I was able to finally send that to you, Mari, sorry.
Oh, okay. Um, so. Can we just put that as a note, so we're not here till eleven o'clock at night, we can try to do that on, on, okay.
Yeah, the sta, the dimensional standards.
And we can even have, spell them out, you know, minimum lot, frontage setback. Height, floor area and maximum dwelling units per acre.
But it also includes the illumination. Zoning that goes with the, the um, zone, like, you know, the illumination.
Yeah, and the provisions of. Outdoor illumination. Outdoor illumination, landscaping and. It's landscaping, not landscaping, outdoor illumination and.
So I think outdoor illumination is the only thing that really refers to, to zoning districts, yeah.
We'll just make sure.
And now the signs do too, but.
I was just gonna say, what about?
Oh, yeah.
Might be signs included in multifamily.
Is that fine, um, Emily, just to keep it as simple as district one residential B zoning? Or do we have to clarify?
Well, so I think. Yeah, if you warnings, yeah, that's much better, thank you. Sorry, I'm looking at my laptop for this one. Usually, usually I have a, a big monitor, but not today, um, thank you for that. Uh, so if you're going to do the dimensional standards, then they, you know, they should be an E table of dimensional standards or. Um, again, this is setting up the applicability. Of the uh, zoning, so what you've got there in terms of the dimensional standards, I would say C. Section E, if you want to put, if you want to put it in a table, and then. And put the table back in.
And just clarify the headings of the table, so that it doesn't say.
Exactly, and then with signs and provisions of outdoor illumination, you're going to want to refer to the specific sections in your zoning bylaw that they apply to.
Yeah, the one seventy four dash. Twelve point one or whatever it is, yeah.
And then you may just have to double check, um, the way we have the language above. That added outdoor illumination, um, I had put it in LZ dash two for the business village. Um, you may want to go back and look and see, uh, because I know there were several levels in there. Where you're going to need this to add this district to, so just make a note, the, you'll need to, um. Fix one seventy four dash twelve dash one.
Oh, okay, so the overlay needs to be added to the outdoor illumination?
Yeah, because your other zoning, your, your outdoor illumination is applied uh, based on zoning districts, so. Looks like I added it to the wrong one, uh, perfectly fine, but you'll need to add it to the correct one.
Okay.
You know, I'm talking about the paragraphs we deleted that refer to outdoor illumination.
So that, yes, I am, because, but that referred to LZ dash two, I picked business village because I knew that. This was in the bu, business village, but now that you're doing Residence B. You're going to want to refer it to whichever. Um, category Residence B is in.
Okay, so the, 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 the language that was under on page two. Um, after. Uh, where it said add the following text to one seventy four dash twelve point one outdoor illumination. That has to come back into the bylaw.
No, I think we just add in language into the outdoor illumination that talks about district. One.
That's, that's what that was.
That's what that is, Mari. Yeah, this first page, uh, page two is actually saying what to put into our code that exists already.
Yeah.
I'm just looking it up now to see which uh, district it was.
So, um.
Yeah, so LZ one is your low ambient lighting. And currently it's zoning districts residence and residence, A and Residence B. So you'll want to refer. Uh, refer to that, add the, add this district to uh, that section, it, which is uh, to be. Where right now it's um, three LZ dash two, it should be two LD, LZ dash one. And then the language will be different, I won't hold you up by giving it all. And then you're going to want it to be zoning district. Yeah. And then you'll see it when you get there.
And we'll have to say that for the industrial park.
Well, that's a good question for you because the industrial park is. Um, LZ dash three, which is moderately high ambient lighting. And so the question's going to be, do you want? That lighting applied to your multifamily district, or do you want it to always be that? Um, low ambient lighting. I'd like low ambient lighting.
Mm-hmm.
That makes sense.
Yeah, then you may want to add the whole overlay to LZ dash one. That was a good point, thank you.
These are little notes for Karina and Mimi and Colleen.
Good, thank you, that's a big help.
Appreciate it.
It's all clear right now, but.
Yeah.
Tomorrow, we're all like, what?
Um, okay. So, and, and um, we're gonna work off this, but I'm gonna try and multitask. Too, to just make sure we work back on the original that Colleen had. But I did, I do now have and I can open.
Okay.
Um, okay. So then this seems to be okay. We're done with section. B applicability.
Yes. And then on to definitions. So a lot of these, um, we took out.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
And that, that's more than fine. I would only, to, to the point of simplicity earlier, I would only keep in the definitions that you actually need.
So, um.
Can I ask a question though about this? So certainly. We've had a lot of discussion. Um, especially Debbie had brought up multiple times, the percentage of affordable units.
Mm-hmm.
I, I do think we need to add the, uh, back the affordable unit definition. And discuss that. Am I the only one who thinks this?
So I think that we took the definition that was under definitions and we added it within the, uh, text of the bylaw. Like under affordable, right then? Is that what we did? I think that's what I notes.
No, just, um, if you look at your one page under, you, you had on one sheet that you provided with definitions that are going to be added to the existing code, 174 dash two. You had, um, we just removed affordable unit because, um, we just simply took that out.
Oh, I have a little note that says within bylaw text, but we didn't do that.
It's in within this text here. It's in within, um, if you go to the affordability section of this.
Oh, it has the affordability requirements in that section.
Yeah, so under section H of this current draft bylaw. Um. Right? I think it was in there somewhere.
So I have a question. Is the, is this affordability definition for MBTA communities, the same definition as all other state definitions? That it needs to be in a certain section or does it go in our code somewhere else?
Do you already have a definition? I can go back and check. I think I probably did at the time, but do you already have a definition of affordable housing unit in your bylaws?
No.
Let me look.
Okay.
I don't think so.
So then if you don't, you may need it in here. Um, I will also look until I get it open.
And that's always the same definition? It doesn't change with any other applications?
So I know when, uh, this sample, when the sample bylaw was developed that, um, I used for this, um, uh, HLC had, uh, other parts of what was then DHCD, uh, look at the definitions to make sure that they were consistent. Um, I haven't checked recently to double check, but I know this went through, um, uh, a review of several different departments.
So in 174 dash two, I don't see it under affordable per se, but sometimes they put something in front of it. One family house.
So under H is affordability requirements? Would that be where it goes?
If it's a definition, it should stay with definitions. So you always put all your definitions together. So if you're going to define affordable housing unit or define that term, basically what you put is the defined term in definitions and then you're talking about it in the affordability requirements, but the definition of that term is out there. So one of the things you want to make sure is that if you have defined terms, that they are in either the definitions of this bylaw or your main definition section of your bylaw. And that's what the text at the top was referring to, that you could put your definitions in either place.
So should we add affordable unit to our definitions under, uh, 174 dash two in the overarching bylaw? Cause I would think this definition would be the same for any affordability throughout the.
You might just check, uh, let me just check your, um, existing affordable. Um, because that it may, one of the things that you find is sometimes, um, as with this one, people have put different definitions into different bylaws, so.
It might be somewhere else in the code already defined, not under definitions, but under maybe MRD, ma- ma- major residential development. It might be under that special permit.
Exactly. So if you're going to put it in seventy, 174 dash two, then you just want to make sure it's not conflicting with something else. Um, otherwise you could just leave it in here.
Yeah, there were no definitions in, um, MRD.
Yeah.
And I'm trying to.
So I just rejected the change, just so you can see what it is in a little bit bolder. What was in there?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we don't, I don't see any affordable unit.
And in that case, you could put in to 174 dash two if you wanted to.
It's not in the downtown district?
No.
Cause we talk about affordability there as well. Good catch, Jesse.
Well, you know what's interesting? I remember the downtown district, we definitely have an affordability requirement.
We do.
So I'm looking in it right now to find it. And I just haven't found it yet.
Yeah, I see the same reference. It's to affordable housing, but it doesn't, um, it doesn't define what an affordable unit is.
Yeah, I haven't been able to find. I've been searching through the bylaw. But in the downtown district, it does give a, a percentage if you're over a certain number.
Right, but that's not a definition, right?
No, no, but I'm saying if you're looking, it's 12 and a half percent if you have four or more units, or more than four units or something like that. I don't have it on my screen. Yeah. Mimi and I looked at that this afternoon. Cause we were trying to compare when we get to the affordable section in this draft bylaw.
Yeah, I'm happy to talk to you about that too, uh, as we, as we, when we get to that discussion.
Okay. So it wouldn't hurt, it appears it wouldn't hurt to put it in our regular definitions under 174 dash two. But if we found a conflict, we could still keep it temporarily in the, under C here in this code, in this specific section.
So what is the definition though for affordable unit?
It's right there on.
Right there.
Right where?
On the screen that Marty has right there.
I have my screen open and not Marty's.
Oh.
Silly me. Gotcha.
So do we need a definition for affordable housing and applicant? That's a question to the board.
Do we need an applicant as a definition in anything in our town code?
I didn't think so.
I didn't think so either.
I don't think so.
Okay. And what about affordable housing?
Well, it's in downtown district and it's also in this.
See, the, the problem though, Marty, is we're looking, I, I have not found that yet.
Okay.
So there is an affordability requirement in the downtown district and also in major residential development, but we have not defined affordable unit in, in either or any or in our overarching bylaw definitions. So, um, so we were gonna add number one affordable unit to the 174 dash two.
Right.
But just make sure that it doesn't, um, conflict with anything else. So the next question is, are the other two definitions affordable housing? And we just said applicant, we don't need, but do we need to define affordable housing?
It refers.
Back to 174 dash 10.3.
That's this, that's this, uh, overlay by law. Yeah.
Yeah, and when you look at the affordability requirement, section H, um.
But isn't that kind of common sense housing that includes affordability?
Yeah.
For most of us, yes.
I'm just looking where it was used in that H section.
Was under, um.
Okay, I found it. I found it. I found it. I found it. Where is it? 174 dash 13.2 section E. Um, 1E. I thought it's somebody, um. Who's sharing their screen right now?
I am.
Marty?
Yep.
All right.
You want me to go to town code?
No, I'll, I'll just email you this. It's gonna come from my work email.
What was it? 13.21E?
Yeah, it's.
Oh, major residential.
Yeah, it's in MRD.
Okay.
Low income household, well, it says, relationship to the affordable housing inventory is intended that the affordable housing unit serving low income households that result in this bylaw be considered as local initiative units in compliance with the requirements of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development as required for the 10% statutory requirement. So it's basically saying it's for the, for the purpose of serving low income households. So maybe what we should do, cause I just want to make sure Emily is gonna say that what's in MRD is gonna be acceptable to the state for the purposes of this bylaw. Cause it might not be exactly the same.
I'm probably not going to say that because of the requirements in MRD. Um, MRD has different requirements, um, than, uh, the state has done and, um, so we're, when we get to section H, we're going to need to talk about it. But, um, I'm looking at MRD now and I do not see a definition section.
No.
Uh, that has those terms, so I would say.
It's not, it's not in a definition section, but it is under section E affordable housing.
Right, so this is just the definition of the terms. Section H in this overlay refers to the requirements that uses those terms, but this section is just how the terms are defined. So I think the question, I, and I don't disagree, we definitely need to talk about MRD cause, um, uh, cause of the, the questions you raised there and H, uh, in the overlay, I just want to make sure that you all understand that this is just whether or not you want to define the term before you use it, basically.
A little wise idea.
I would think that's a good idea too.
I think so too. Yep.
We don't have anything anywhere else. We've been looking.
So affordable unit, oh.
Be proposed to be added to the definitions under 174 dash two.
Yes. So remove it from here. Correct?
I guess you don't need it both places.
Okay. Affordable housing.
The one thing you're going to do with the affordable housing is if you keep that definition, then obviously the reference is to 174 dash two rather than 174 dash 10.3, cause you just moved the definition that it refers to, to 174 ba- dash two.
I'm gonna just save this so I don't lose it.
So, okay, so we just basically are gonna have a different criteria for the term affordable housing in this than we do in MRD. Do I have that right?
I hope not.
We can get to that when we get to H. Right now, you're just saying this is what affordable housing is in both MRD and in section H, you're applying specific criteria to that definition of affordable housing. Um, and he called it out, uh, uh, Jesse, thank you for finding the major residential development, cause I think that will go a long way to the discussion of age, having that in front of us.
I'm gonna put it in the chat.
In the, um, area median income, uh, Karina and I propose that that be defined in 174 dash two also.
So we're keeping the affordable.
Housing. Definition, the second one too. So we're, we're moving affordable units to 174 dash two and then with affordable housing will stay here ref- referring back to affordable units in 174 dash two. Okay. So we're keeping this one too. Keep that here. And we don't need applicant. Okay, that's why you're at AMI.
Yeah, and that we propose that that be added to the definitions and the overarching zoning under 174 dash two, cause that's the standard, um.
Criteria.
Definition, yeah.
Good with that one? And then as of right was removed?
Yeah, I didn't think we needed to define that. And it isn't, uh, this isn't the only section in the code where there's ads of right uses.
And we removed the EA, uh, oh, no, development standards?
We left, I think.
We left that in and, um, leaving it here under these definitions? Yeah.
Yeah, cause it refers just to this section, the code. And then multifamily housing. We put under 174 dash two, but we added a a multifamily definition just for this section, cause it's conflicts with what our multifamily housing definition in the code is. So we propose that in the code, we have it under dwelling, dwelling, comma, multifamily, which is, uh, two units and then we propose dwelling, comma, multifamily within MCO, MC MoD, which is this definition.
And then we also spelled it out under the the draft bylaw here under 10 point, under B one.
Yeah.
We put it within the text.
Yes. So does, is everyone in agreement with that?
So I guess my only clarifying question would be, would number four be dwelling, comma, multifamily housing, MCO D? Or is it fine just to say multifamily housing?
So, under, so I sent a, a separate sheet that showed the changes that we proposed to the over, overall zoning code. And it was in there as dwelling, comma, multifamily housing within an MCD.
So shouldn't this match? That is what my question is.
So do we wanna leave this here, too?
Oh, I see.
Cause then we have it under um. One seventy four. Ten dot three G one, we've defined it.
Yeah, the difference is that the definition proposed under the one seventy four dash two general definitions. It's dwelling. Multifamily within the M C O D, and here we say. Multifamily. Yeah, we're mov- moving it here and we're just putting it under the. Context of.
B.
B one.
So under. B one applicability, an applicant may develop. Multifamily housing and then add this, what that is, within a M. C O D in accordance with the provisions of this.
Yeah.
You want me to add comma, yep. Does that work?
Well, and so. Then it says located within a M C.
Oh.
O D right at the end there.
So we don't need to do anything?
Unless you wanna change it and don't like the way that we propose to do that.
No, I just, again, I think it's just trying to find simplicity.
Yeah.
So an applicant may develop multifamily housing comma, a building with three or more, you might wanna say an applicant may develop multifamily housing. Which is. A building with three or more residential dwelling units or. I don't know, or comma A, that stands for the same thing, not yet. That's.
Yeah.
That's better writing the way you have it there.
So we're gonna remove it out of definitions. Sorry for making everyone nauseous. And you also suggest we remove this, correct? Residential dwelling unit. Cause it's in one seventy four dash two definitions.
So. It's, we have a definition for dwelling unit that um. Does not match this. I suggest we. Update that one with this definition.
Yeah, I think, I like that, I think if we end up moving forward with something different, Mimi, like ADUs by right or something, maybe. We'll end up using some more modern terminology. I don't know if that has, will, will come into play, but. But I like updating it so that it's.
So you're recommending then not just for this section, but for the. The general code to update the de- definition?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so they're not, so we don't have. Two definitions. Same or similar terms defined differently throughout the code.
Right, yes.
Mimi's separate sheet. Which was definitions had this, but I'm just gonna put it here again.
In our, the definition in one seventy four dash two. Is. A dwelling unit is a. Living quarters for a single family.
Pretty nineteen thirty two.
Yes, and then it defines a, a family. And I don't.
Yikes.
I don't know if that's necessarily.
You know, relevant. Well, on your separate page, Mimi, you have dwelling unit as living quarters for a single family. A single unit providing complete independent. Living facilities for one or more persons, including permanent provisions for living, sleeping, eating, cooking and. Sanitation.
Yes, so the question is, do we need it to still say a single family, which is. Any number of individuals related by blood, marriage, or adoption, and not more than six individuals not so related, living together as a single housekeeping unit. The limit on. Number of unrelated individuals shall not apply to foster children under the age of sixteen.
Oh, my god.
Wow, is that necessary?
I actually thought I saw a definition, I don't know where, uh, that was like a looser definition of family. Not, not that definition. So I don't, I don't really like, I don't really like that definition. And we, so do we have to define families? Is that what we're talking about right now?
Well, if it, if we have living quarters for a single family, we do, but if we just go with this definition. Which is. A single unit providing complete independent living facilities for one or more persons, including. Permanent provisions for living, sleeping, eating, cooking, and sanitation.
That sounds better.
That's better, I like that. Sorry, that's the definition for. What?
So that's the definition, um.
Dwelling unit.
For, for a residential dwelling unit. That was proposed within this section of the bylaw, but it can. It conflicted with our, the definition, the nineteen fifty definition that we had in nine seventy four dash two. And so I was just wondering if it's necessary that. People in a residential. Unit be related by blood or marriage.
Yeah, I, I like, I like the new definition of residential dwelling unit.
Okay, so we can get. So we can update that and get rid of family, remove family?
Yes. In one seventy four dash two?
Yeah.
And that won't impact.
Well, I guess we can just leave family, and if we take it out of single family, then that just wouldn't apply to it, I don't know if family someplace else in the. Code. Actually, that living quarters for a single family was updated in nineteen ninety. Okay.
So just to recap. In one seventy four dash two, dwelling unit will be changed to. The dwelling unit described on your separate sheet, a single unit providing complete, et cetera.
We'll take the family out of there. And just do the, use the definition that's uh. Here for residential dwelling unit. Single unit. Complete with blah blah.
Yeah. The living quarters for a single family will be stricken.
Yes.
And just have that, okay. Okay.
So and then, um. Multifamily zoning district, I didn't. Think that that was necessary. Same with open space, cause that. Conflicts with what our current. Um, definition of open spaces.
Can you see those now? Sorry, this. Things getting, these are the ones that you were. Were deleted out. On the right.
Is everyone okay with that, or should we leave those in?
I'm good with it.
I'm just okay with that.
Okay.
Yep. And there were some others there, the site plan review authority.
Yeah, we just put planning board. Throughout the code. Instead of defining it there. Which is how it's done in the, in the rest of the code.
But we did remove sub district.
Yeah, so that we'll probably have to pu- wanna put back in.
Where was sub district removed?
It was under site plan review authority, so after residential dwelling unit.
Yeah, I don't know why this won't open.
Um, under the, if you hit the down arrow, um, you had another window open a minute ago. A little dialogue box that had um, the parking structure and everything removed.
Yeah, was it in there?
I think there was a down arrow there.
Yeah, it's very fickle. I'm just gonna reject the change.
Yeah, down on the next page.
No.
There's another one.
Oh, there it is over there.
Yeah.
So we need to. Reject change on that one, too. So I can. Hold on, so this, I'm gonna go back.
Right, cause residential dwelling units is gonna go to the. Main. Definitions. One seventy four dash two. And we have sub district.
So. I don't think that's applicable, is it? We don't have any sub districts anymore, we just have district one, two, and three.
Those sub districts are the ones underneath. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Sorry, you're saying the same thing as me, Karina, so those would be considered sub districts. Basically, your overlay is this big piece, you've got within that overlay, you've got a district one, a district two, a district three, yeah.
Oh, so the whole thing is a sub district?
The whole thing is a district. Each of your named districts is a sub district within that district.
Gotcha.
Okay, so hold on, so we need to go back up here to call these sub district.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
And you guys have to decide if you're gonna hyphenate or not, but I'll let you guys do that. And this, we already have some, somewhere, correct? Subsidized housing inventory?
Yes.
Okay.
You know, I'm not sure about the definition for sub district. It just doesn't. Strike me as being, I don't know, an area within the M C O D that is geographically smaller than the M C O D district. Is that right?
Yeah, so there's the whole district. And then there's. One. Which is. Um. What we called area six by the train station, which is smaller than the whole overarching thing. But it's within, but it's within the, the, the whole overlay. And then we have the one on Route nine, and then the one up by Marlboro.
So the overlay is considered anything within the scope?
So the overlay is the combination of all three. Anything that. Multifamily housing is allowed by right.
Okay. I got it, okay. So we have three sub districts. We have one zoning district called M C O D, but it has three sub districts, is that right, Emily?
Yes.
It's, it's not the zoning underneath it, which is the sub district, the sub district is the train station area. The Route nine area. And the up near Marlboro. Area.
Yes, exactly, you've got three distinct geographic areas. Um, within the overall overlay, and you've got different rules applied to each, which happen to be the underlying district. But they are in fact different rule, except for the one, district one. But they are in fact, different geographic districts within the larger overlay.
Yep, and the key is district. District and then the three sub districts, right?
Exactly, yep.
Emily, thank you for being with us, because this is like mind numbing. I can't imagine doing this with other planning boards all over the state, so thank you.
Alright. So have we? Looked to D?
Getting there. Yes.
I'm gonna shrink my screen so you guys can see the comments. My, my monitor's being very temperamental. You can see, okay?
Yep.
Yeah. So just. You know, for. Absolute clarity to refer that back to that. What was defined under. Once seventy four, ten dot three B one, of what multifamily housing is.
I think more clarity, the better, I think that's fine.
And then, um, the next question was whether we want customary home occupation because. It conflicts with what we have defined in our code. Which is, um.
Oh, can I just ask you a question? So my question was. Permitted use are as follows. Um, and I guess I just needed the clarity, and maybe this is an Emily question, I was like, why wouldn't accessory uses under permitted use be part B? Why is it a sub, why is it a number two?
Good question, it's because it depends on the principal use, so essentially, your principal use is a multifamily housing. The accessory uses mean that they have to be going with that multifamily housing, in other words, parking is good example. Some places would allow parking as a principal use, that means an entire lot would be nothing but parking, right? That's the principal use on the lot. So by putting it as an accessory, you're saying, okay, you can have parking, but it has to be because you're doing a multifamily use.
Perfect, thank you for that.
And you are also not required to have customary home occupation. Some communities do, some communities don't, I left it in, so you have the chance to chat. And disguise, decide if that was worth doing.
What does that really mean, customary home occupation?
So, we have it defined in our code.
Oh. I should know it.
The use of a porch should not exceeding twenty five percent of a one family home, including the accessory buildings by persons resident. Therein for gainful occupation that is clearly incidental and secondary to the use as a residence. That does not.
Oh, sorry.
It goes on. For another ten, for another ten minutes, but do you want me to stop?
Does that have something to do with accessory apartments?
No, 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 it's a, it's allows you to. Operate a small business out of your home.
Oh, yeah.
If it doesn't, if it doesn't increase traffic noise, smoke, vibration, dust, odor, glare, unsightlyness. Or other effects not normally produced by a residence.
Okay, wow.
And my question is that the definition that we have refers specifically to a one family home. And is that the same as a single family residence? Or? Cause we don't define one family home.
I was with you.
Yeah.
To remove it.
Yeah.
That would be easiest.
I think so. Yep.
We can always go back at it. Another time.
Yeah.
Or not.
By another time, I mean after it has uh, passed.
Yeah, because albeit it's a special permit, but the adaptive reuse of um, historic buildings. Has a lot to do with customary home occupation. has a lot to do with customary home occupation. That might complicate.
Okay, so now we're on the development standards, yes?
Yeah, so we already went through that, and we're gonna leave that. As is.
Yep, so I just rejected the removal.
Are we gonna change it to one, two, and three?
Oh, yes.
Instead of the areas?
And we're calling it sub district, correct?
The whole thing is a sub district A. Or one.
One. Oh. I think we have to add.
A call.
I think we're getting rid of sub district A and B, we're just calling it sub district one, and this would be sub district numbers two and three.
Yeah, yes, that works.
The, the thing that you're going to have to do there is you've got, see area seven is seventy-five.
Oh, right.
So you just have to, um, say which one of those is two and which one of those is three, because that's the defining factor, as I understand it.
This is two. This is three. And that's again, sub district, right?
Yeah. Both industrial park.
Uh, where are you at?
Subject, right, right where you were, you just put in sub district two and three?
Yep.
Yeah. They are both industrial park, so shouldn't they have the same front, frontage? One, one is, uh, on Route nine. And it's different. There's a difference, okay, thank you. All right, um, the next change was um, exceptions three. I think that we already referred to that in one seventy-four fifteen in our code.
I'm just having a look at it, because, uh, depending on what it says, it may make a difference to how you're modeled.
Okay.
Okay, so then in that case, you probably just want to refer to one seventy-four fifteen, so they know that that is a.
Okay, so, yeah.
And then that section and any other section that refers to special permit, you can obviously take that out. That was in there in case you had special permit uses, which you're not doing, because you're keeping it simple, so.
That's right.
Just fine. I'm all in favor of keeping it simple.
Hey, we're flying now.
We got just a half a page, or one and a half pages left, right?
So I think that the first four hours, Karina and I went through the first, like, two pages and all those definitions, and so that took forever.
God bless you, thank you for that.
So, I know that, that, um, the state doesn't want parking, because because they say anything near a commuter rail, you don't need a car, but that's not really true. So I can't imagine having, um, multifamily housing with no available parking. So it said maximum spaces, but I know the developers that come before, um, the planning board, and if anything's an option, and parking's expensive, that they won't, they won't do it.
Minimum is fine, the only change I'd make is under one number of parking spaces, cross out that maximum and put in a minimum. Where you have the following maximum numbers, you'll just wanna make that minimum, yeah. If you had said, we'd like a minimum, uh, number of, uh, spaces of five spaces per dwelling unit for multifamily, we'd be having a different conversation, but one point five is, um, totally acceptable.
Okay. And then the, the bikes for fifteen units or more, I, I'm fine with that, I don't know what.
Yeah. Yeah, that's just for the covered parking and storage, so, yeah.
That's fine. Oh, see, so Mimi, you asked on this one. General development standards, are these necessary, should be incorporated into site plan? So what I was asking about, there are things that we don't specifically talk about in our codes.
Correct. Connections.
Yeah.
Uh, vehicular access, but like screening for parking, we do.
Part of landscape, yeah.
As part of landscaping, we require a five-foot landscape buffer on the perimeter of all parking lots. Um, parking material, that's in our, our parking in loading bylaw requires uh, very similar to what this says.
So should we just?
Point, yeah.
The refer to again, like, could we just refer to?
Exactly. I would refer, anywhere you've already got it, I would refer to it. These, these are intended to be your criteria for site plan review and this general development standard. So if you have it, refer to it.
Okay. Thirteen is landscaping.
Yeah, I do have the provisions of one seven four dash thirteen.
Sorry.
Under E, under E, so, um, I think I missed the parking, so apologies for that.
Oh, no worries, oh my god.
Parking is.
Well, I try and tailor it as much as possible, but, you know, sometimes, sometimes you miss a section, so.
And that's, uh, parking and loading, this is one seventy-four dash twelve.
And you'll see under F, or, oh, don't, don't take all of that, because I've got the, yeah, I've got the provisions in there, so, um. Yeah, and the same thing for lighting, I point to twelve point one outdoor illumination on the next page.
Well, I would say that, uh, planting shall include species that are native and leave it at that.
Uh, the reason I do adapted to region is because of climate change, is that over time, not all species that are native may be appropriate, that are native to our climate, may be appropriate for our climates, so.
Yeah, but that may be in a hundred years.
I had one, uh, client, I won't refer, uh, uh, and it wasn't an MBTA communities that client, but they actually specified the plants of the particular county they were in, so got very specific. So I do always check, but, you know, it is, it is your zoning by law, and, um, I just give you the options.
Okay, so can, just clarity, so you want me to leave this whole thing here, or just the refer to landscape?
I would, I would, well, I think, I think we can just refer to landscape. Because we do have the prohibited plant list in our landscaping, and then we. So I think we can just.
Simplify, is that what you're telling me to do?
But this is where we did say that last sentence, landscaping, um, shall be included as part of site plan review process.
Yeah, so I would delete up into the provision, refer to the provisions. Just like we did, did we, just like we did in the first two.
Right, so the whole thing, uh, but you want me to keep nothing, right? Just this, delete it and do that?
Well, Mimi, is native, um, in, in one seventy-four twelve one, is, does it say shall include or should include for native in that section? I know you know that section better than me. I mean, do we wanna make it shall?
Well, we're just referring to that, we're just referring to our landscape section.
Okay.
So, just go back, what I'm saying is that same with outdoor, the provisions of one seventy-four shall be included as part of site plan review process, that last sentence should stay, shouldn't it? To clarify.
The whole applicability applies to site plan process.
Oh, okay.
Overlay district, so I think it's redundant, personally.
Do we call it out somewhere else? Because this is the section Mimi and I were saying, it's called out somewhere that we specifically saying landscaping is part of.
So I think under, and I'll have to.
Isn't that the whole part, is that it is still, um, all of the provisions?
And all of the provisions of the bylaw governing the respective underlying zoning shall remain in full force, except for uses allowed as of right, does that cover that?
So these are the uses allowed of right, right? The multifamily uses as of right, so what it's saying is that everything can happen in your underlying zoning, except for those uses allowed of, as of right in this district. So if you're going to have any uses allowed of right as of right in this district, and you want your standard to apply to them, they need to be in this overlay. So, but what you're doing by saying in this overlay, these provisions in our current zoning apply is fine, what you've been doing is fine, so, um, I did have a quick look at your, um, landscaping, and you have, um, in one seventy-four dash thirteen ten D, you list, you have a lit, you don't refer to the plant list, prohibited plant list. You list, and they, uh, you have a long list of invasive species. Um, so the only tricky thing about that is that the plant list is updated, the prohibited plant list is updated, and you haven't updated your bylaw, there might be something on it that's not in your bylaw, but you know, you're perfectly, it's perfectly fine to just simply refer to one seven four dash one three, um, as you've been doing to the others, so. And then at some point, if you wanted to update one seven four dash one three, you could, and then it would apply to everything.
Power of the pen, Karina. I'm moving on.
Okay, that's fine.
You can do the same, yeah, exactly, you can do the same thing here if you wanted to.
So our landscaping does say invasive plants as defined by the Massachusetts Invasive Plant Group.
You've got, and invasive plants are, so if you take that out, are plants, so you've got the definition, but you don't actually refer to the list as being the governing document for the plants that are considered to be invasive, right? So you're, when you go down to D where it says the following invasive species are prohibitive, that's the list that you have in your bylaw, it doesn't point to an outside source, is all I'm saying. And it's up to you if you want to do that or not.
Okay. And then I think that mechanicals and dumpsters, we, um, we don't refer to in site plan, so those can stay.
So just to be clear, that underlying zoning paragraph in the previous section covers that it's covered under site plan. That landscape.
Yeah, the underlying zoning in the previous section says that everything works in the underlying zoning unless you're using this bylaw. And if you're using this bylaw, then for the uses in this bylaw, then the provisions of this bylaw apply.
But where does it say in this bylaw that, um, the provisions of landscaping and lighting apply to the M C O D?
Right here, that's where you're putting it, is right here.
Just by saying refer to landscaping.
Well, no, you should actually have the, the provisions of, um, which was in one of the earlier things.
That's what I'm saying, those last sentences, as each of those sections should stay. The provisions of blah, blah, blah are part of site plan, the provisions of outdoor shall stay, yeah, those last sentences of each of those sections should stay in.
Yes.
After refer.
Yes. You could even, if you really wanted to simplify it, rather than having these categories here, just have the provisions of the following shall apply to the site plan review process, and just list landscaping, outdoor illumination, parking and loading, just put those in there. Because right now, it's set up by categories, yeah, it doesn't have to be set by, set up by categories like this. So you could have all of the ones that you don't have in your bylaw could be listed, and at the end you can say, and the following provisions um, of the following sections, provisions of those sections also apply to this process.
How do you guys wanna do that?
Where would you put that, Emily, just at the end of this section?
I think you could just put it at the end of this section, yeah.
That the provisions of landscaping, outdoor illumination, parking, and possibly signs? Signs provision, those four are part of site plan review.
Would it be under site design, like a section, a letter, or a separate number?
Uh, I would do it as a section under site design, another, uh, so, you know, whatever it's gonna end up, B J or something. It'd be less than that, because you're going to take out the other pieces.
Because I've gotta remove them, right, so, um. Um, do you have to, I have to stay consistent, right? Why is it a bullet? Shouldn't be a bullet.
You're the techno whiz.
I know, that's why I'm like, why is this a bullet? Should not be a bullet. Should be like a number.
While you're doing that, I'll just ask about the stormwater. Is that the, is, is that the new town code that was just voted at last town meeting?
So that's, that's my question, and I think we need to.
Yeah.
I think we need to check with Melissa on that, because we have a, um, stormwater and erosion control bylaw that's administered by the Conservation Commission.
Yep.
I would add that to the list, if that's what you've got, is use, uh, that's administered by CONCOM, not planning boards, E B A, okay, then that's, it's, that's a separate thing.
So I would just want to, uh, double check with Melissa and make sure that, that this is what they do. Yeah, it's under the, yes, for permit, so that'll be the question for her.
But shouldn't we also refer to the code, since now it's in the bylaw? Well, it's out of site, where was it, site plan?
No, it was under zoning, and it's under general code.
Oh, general, okay.
So under site plan review, we, the planning board does review stormwater management. It's not just conservation, it's in our list of items.
Yeah, right, but this, yeah, but this specific sounds more concomy to me.
Yeah, especially with that one acre, I thought that was one of the changes that they just made.
To a half, to a half acre.
Yeah, so all we're saying here, or, or as, as we said above, you just can't have, require a special permit for that. you just can't have, require a special permit for that, it has to be part of your site plan review process. So that may be something where you do want to just check with Concom and coordinate. Mul, uh the MBTA Communities Act does not preclude conservation, right, that's not zoning, and what you're doing is writing zoning, just make sure the language coordinates.
Yeah, yeah, the other thing under the following provisions, we should have lit there too, I think.
All right.
And again, as we already discussed, it's part of your site plan review process, not the um
Not a special.
Not a separate special permit, exactly. So you've kind of, you've said that above, and now you're incorporating those standards down here below, that's a two-part process.
It reminds me what.
Sure, that site plan review includes stormwater management provisions. Because we do, we require um drainage calculations and how do we show that here?
So that, that was that language, yeah. So here.
We don't put it under the provisions here?
No, you would put it down, so this is just speaking about the underlying zoning, so here we're saying, we're gonna do the site plan review, then what you're doing is you're taking exactly these, and then you're putting them down in the provisions below and saying this is now part of our site plan review process.
Okay, cause water resource protection is different from stormwater and erosion control.
Right, and waters, water resource protection should be here, and then your stormwater and erosion control is included above and stormwater management. That's probably your, I'm guessing, because I haven't, I haven't seen the new piece that um you said had just been approved by the Concom, but I'm guessing that relates to your MS four permit?
Well, it used to be in the zoning, so stormwater management erosion control used to be in the zoning, and they moved it out to general under one fifty-four or something like.
Yeah, dash five, one fifty-four dash five.
Okay, so what I'm saying is, we're referring to all the other criteria here under these provisions, because it's in zoning. But where in that paragraph above, does it say that stormwater management is part of site plan review?
So if it's been moved out into your general bylaw, excuse me, if it's been moved out into your general bylaw and it's now under the Concom, then it's no longer zoning. But if you are still do requiring the stormwater, I guess my question back to you is how are projects being coordinated, a project, project review being coordinated between Concom and the planning board?
It's an overlap.
It's an overlap, okay.
It's always been under.
Conservation and site plan approval for planning board, it's just that they moved it out of the zoning code so that they don't have to go to town meeting to make changes there all the time, so.
Got it.
Somewhere we need to say that site plan review still does include stormwater management.
Then I'd put it under E here, and then we could um, we could work back and forth a little bit on the language.
Okay, so the provisions of stormwater management and erosion control are part of site plan review process.
Yeah, and and let's think a little bit more about that, uh we'll need to get the reference in here. You know, is it, is Concom going to do it and then send the information over to you, does your review happen first, I guess, I I just wanna have a little bit more clarity.
They submit it with their application to both the commission, conservation and to, and to the planning board.
Okay.
Separate departments, same submission, but it gets reviewed by the same engineering consultant. But it gets affect, you know, it's affecting the review process under both.
Okay. And is there a situation in which Concom might deny and the planning board um accept or vice versa, or is it usually discussed back and forth?
Site plan is conditioned.
Okay.
Right, maybe site plan is conditioned and then.
So Concom would come back and, oh, so the site plan's conditioned on Con, on the Concom's recommendations?
No, um, so conservation has a stormwater management permit.
Okay.
Um which they issue with conditions.
Okay.
Planning board has site plan review that includes stormwater management aspects that have to be reviewed as part of the project.
Okay.
It's a, it's very redundant. But it's for a little bit separate reasons.
That's fine, I just wanna make sure we get, we understand the process so that it's appropriately called out in here, that's all.
Yeah.
And just checking as part of your process, when you're done, this obviously goes to town council for their review prior to your public hearings?
Yeah, it goes to town council for review. Hopefully before the public hearings.
Prior to or roundabout public hearings?
Sometime for it's approved by town meeting.
We're getting close.
So
Buildings.
I think this is kind of as far as um we got, but I suggested that under our um multi-family housing for the elderly, which I love, cause it's an over fifty-five elderly, please. They have this language that I thought would be helpful here, especially in the area by the train station, which is a residential that um the building should have exterior design that is consistent with the styles of the surrounding residential neighborhood in the town of Southborough in general, cause people are um afraid of like an apartment building stuck down there with all these little uh amidst these residential neighborhoods, and I thought that would be helpful.
Very helpful.
We just do like, could you just call it exterior design, just to follow the flow of the rest?
Sure.
So um just because it's my job to raise objections, sorry.
Yeah, oh, please.
So a couple of thoughts here, one is uh you do have some, uh a couple of your districts are in an industrial area, so um does the sort, the, does the idea of a surrounding residential neighborhood apply to those as well? Um so that's one, and then two, site plan review is generally very much about um uh criteria that are quantifiable um as much as possible, and so does this give sufficient specificity that everybody in a site plan review meeting, yourselves, the applicant, anybody listening in, um would understand what's meant by this in terms of an objective criteria? Or a quantifiable criteria, so.
It's, it's very subjective.
Totally understand the intent, but um.
You have a suggestion on how to, to address that?
Yeah, does that, design guidelines get tricky um uh in, in terms of, so you could you could set up a separate document that has advisory design guidelines and could have, you know, pictures or diagrams or whatever uh that, that makes the intent clear, that's usually the easiest way of dealing with styles. Um the other way that some communities do is they'll define specific building types. Uh that's going to make your zoning more complex if you do that, so I hesitate to mention because um you've, you, you know, the, the simplicity is also good, but I might think a little bit more about how um how to, how, how to express that desire for a uh design that is similar to the area, and as I said, it's usually best done with an outside document. That could be changed, and that can act as advisory in the site plan review process.
I think that's a challenge to try and produce, to be able to put in front of town meeting.
Yes, agreed, um and town meeting doesn't normally adopt those outside documents, so one, yeah, exactly, the guidelines. Um but still, to your point, they're likely to want to know what's said in them before they approve it, and yes, it would be absolutely a challenge to do it between now and then, um. I might, I could think a little bit more about how to do something like this that would be more specific, we could all think a little bit more about something that could be a little bit more specific and get to the, to what you're trying to do here.
Karina, when we uh adopted or, you know, worked on the design guidelines for the downtown district, I don't recall that that was completed before town meeting.
It was draft.
It was.
We had a draft.
Accepted it much later, but it was a draft that was shown at town meeting.
Oh, but we worked on the downtown district bylaw for five years, I believe.
Are there anything in those design guidelines that could be used, in other words, are they at all appropriate enough to be able to, can you, can you point to them, in other words, can you say that, or are they not quite consistent with what you're looking for?
District.
I mean, I don't know how much applicability some of that stuff's gonna have on Route nine.
Yeah, yeah, that's true.
Is it only style? I thought the design guidelines for downtown also describe a height and some other things or stories or something like that.
It's all the justice setbacks, though, and the height restrictions that we have by the district.
You could consider roof pitch as an example, or there's some ratios that you could put in um to, to think about it. Yeah, so you might have a look at the standards in those design guidelines, see what's quantifiable. That could be appropriate for pulling through. Um you know, something that's consistent with the height that you're allowing.
Oh, man, I thought we were close. I'm not gonna make it, guys.
Under A, there's a reference there to the one seventy-four dash ten point three G, I think that should be a six, right? Maybe we talked about that.
Right, where are you?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Right, um under three A, position relative to Principal Street, C also, G seven, I think it's building corner lots is G six, if it stays there, yeah.
So there's a section of uh the downtown district, well this is actually all the problem, cause the downtown district, the design guidelines come into play with um permitting. So specifically, it's special permit from the planning board. Which is not gonna even happen here, right?
Right.
Well, so the downtown the downtown has um by right uses. Mixed use, it's by right.
Yeah, and there's things like building placement and orientation, I'm looking at them right now, building massing, those are all good things you can use, we might be able to tweak this.
Yeah, but what's gonna be, uh what's gonna be right for the downtown district probably won't be right for Route nine.
Yeah, cause most of this is, well, most of this is based on mixed use. These design guidelines.
Right.
Right, right.
So things like your, your transparency, transparency ratios probably aren't going to work, but you could look at roof line, um uh you know, building massing, there might be some pieces there, there's probably some um I think we've got some components about blank walls, but they may have some more pieces on that, so I would just have a look and just see if there's anything that you, that is, again, quantifiable that makes sense for multifamily in your districts and see what you can pull through.
So Emily, have other municipalities had design guidelines in association with MBTA Communities District?
Some are doing them, yes, um I'm working with one community now where uh they, it looks like they're going to be doing the design guidelines themselves, I'm working with another where I'm helping them. Um I've worked with a couple where they've talked about it, but haven't actually done it yet, uh and of course, there's all the communities I'm not working with, some of which are, are doing that. Um so it just depends uh on the timeline, some of them are putting it in and saying they'll add it later. Some of them are, you know, like yourselves, gonna, I think town meeting's gonna wanna see this, so um.
There's two ways we can go, as I see it, either copy in other towns or, you know, modify it slightly, but look at another town that has passed this and their design guidelines. Or do what you just said, Emily, which is, say we'll add this, now, you know, adopt design guidelines next year. Or next town meeting.
Well, so you don't need town meeting for, to adopt the design guidelines.
Is that okay in MBTA communities, though?
Yeah, yeah.
But we'd need to state that we are, our intention is to have design guidelines in this draft bylaw.
We should do that, then, just leave it to planning board to do afterwards.
Yeah.
In fact, you can add.
I have a hard time believing that's, that, that's okay with the state, though, Emily.
That's in there, yes.
Yeah, guidelines is guidelines.
Yeah.
Yeah, so guidelines are just guidelines, they're not regulations or anything.
Right, but the building inspector can point to the design guidelines and say this says outside these guidelines, so you can't have a permit.
No, cause there's, it's just a guideline, he can't enforce anything.
Well, their advisory, their advisory only.
Oh, I, I'm kinda lost on the.
So what we would do was, we would utilize them for site plan review.
Here's a, for instance, we had a C V S that came in that was stucco, orange stucco, like it came out of Santa Fe. And we asked them to use the design guidelines to look more New England, and it came back beautiful.
Does it have a cupola like our Walgreens?
Um, no, cause it was, it was a fake roof.
My worry is that it's already complicated, and I think if there's this whole component that we are, we're gonna put in language, this is design guidelines, no one's gonna know what we're talking about, and we're gonna throw in design guidelines, I just I think it's a red, like, I just feel like it's a red herring, and like, that can be a reason why people just don't like it and don't pass it, so.
Yeah, I mean, I almost want us to strike this.
Yeah, my vote would almost be, I would agree to strike it. I totally understand what you're saying, Mimi, I just think it's really hard to define.
Yeah, yeah.
We're just two people, though, you're, you and Deb have, obviously.
If you don't put anything in there about design guidelines, can you still develop design guidelines later? I mean, if you just leave it saying that the style shall be consistent with the surroundings, blah blah, could we come in later and do design guidelines without it?
We can change this next year or at the next town meeting, uh any way we want. As long as, if it passes.
As long as it remains compliant, um you know.
Right.
Yes, you, so you could, if, if you decide that you want to do design guidelines at a later date, um then you could do one of two things, you could either modify this bylaw to include the design guidelines, or you could modify it to point to outside design guidelines, but either way, you have to set up in the zoning the expectation of what's going to be part of the site plan review process.
Okay.
Yep, and Mimi, do you have a personal opinion?
Yeah.
I'd like to think about it. See if I can find a a more palatable way to do this.
That's fine with me too, Mimi, um I I hear what everybody's saying, I don't want it to fail simply because somebody says, hey, you're not giving us design guidelines, that's not fair. Um and um on the other hand, um it would be nice to be able to come up with something very simple that says pretty much the same as this, is that this is gonna be consistent with the surroundings, and here's a few like quantifiable things. I'd be interested to see what you come up with, Mimi.
The path of least resistance might be to reference the downtown district design guidelines until we can develop um design guidelines specific to this uh zoning.
Yeah, I, I think that's, you're still open on a ball of wax.
Probably.
Yeah. I, 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 if Mimi has the time to look, um and she wants to spend time doing this. Um, I know.
There's nothing I would rather do, I, I bet.
Sure, that's true.
But maybe, I just don't see how you're gonna get, like, what's your what's your plan, Mimi?
What's my plan?
Formula.
To see if I could steal something from another town.
That makes sense, okay. Well, can we just revisit this at the next meeting?
Sure.
Sounds good.
Emily, do you have any guidance for us on which, like, has a Milford, I'm trying to think of another. MBTA community that passed. This, that we could, you know, reference.
I have one right size, yeah.
I have one from Bedford that is architectural design review guidelines. And then it has a secondary commercial mixed use developments. I can research around and send you guys something to look at.
Well, you might have just nailed it right there, Colleen, Bedford. Aesthetically is sort of, there's some similarities. I know it's not the same sized town, but. That might do it.
With the reference.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm happy uh to have a look, I think most. Of the ones that have passed to date are either the rapid transit communities, so they'll be a little denser. Or in terms of ones that are specific to the MBTA Communities Act. Um, or their um slight, their their larger communities, but there are plenty of design guidelines out there for communities of all sizes. It's just um finding kind of the right one, and so, you know, if you wanna ping me, I can help point you in some additional directions.
That'd be great.
It's flagged, Emily's pinged, moving on. It's past my bedtime.
So I don't have anything.
You need to remove the references to mixed use development, uh, I can see it in the shared outdoor space since you're not doing that, so.
And we also had open space requirement.
We don't have an open space requirement, and the question is, we don't have one. Should we add one, but that messes up your compliance too when you start adding open space requirements, doesn't it?
So under number five, yeah, right there, project minimum open space requirement. So, um, Marnie, in that number five.
Yeah, you can still require they have common outdoor space, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Yeah, yeah, right.
That's okay.
Yeah.
I just don't want Marnie to miss under number five, the reference to and mixed use development. In the first line. Anywhere it says and mixed use development has to be stricken. So it should be family that shall have common outdoor.
And then I take out the last sentence because you don't have a minimum of open space requirement.
But do other towns do that, and is, and that's just more complicated to even think about?
Other towns have open space requirements, yeah. Just depends on the town, this is all very individualized.
So we don't, so currently in this bylaw, we don't have any open spaces near and dear to my heart, but um.
It should be like, I say, like, you think multifamily, maybe a playground or dark dog thing, I mean. This, there's things to do with open space.
Like the um downtown has green space requirements.
Right.
So I don't know, so maybe take it out and I'll, I'll continue to think about that.
Well, you you don't have an open space requirement, but you've got a maximum floor area ratio, and you have setbacks, which means that you're. You know, the lot's not going to be fully built out, which means that there is going to be green. Open, non-developed space left over, so I guess the question is, do you want standards for any of that? Um, any of that landscaping standards, I mean, you have landscaping standards, so that should co- cover at least some of that. Um, but you could think further if you wanted addition, anything additional beyond. You have to be careful if you're asking for additional beyond what you have already, because if it's onerous, it could be stricken down. But um certainly the shared outdoor space here is is completely reasonable, it's just you don't have a minimum requirement, so you don't need that last sentence.
Yeah, so Emily, I mean, is ten percent open space all considered onerous by the state?
So, uh, no, ten percent open space wouldn't be con- ju- wouldn't on the face of it be considered um onerous. Uh, the only thing that you have to watch out for is if you have floor area ratio, which you do, is um. Putting an open space or a lot restriction can sometimes work against it, and so both. Um, FAR and open space are components of the model, so depending on what you put into the model. Um, you just might get a different results, that's all. So if it's twenty percent or less, the model already takes that into account, because that's the proxy for the setbacks. But if you put in more than twenty percent. Um, open space requirement, it's likely to affect your model.
Did you say more than twenty?
Yes.
Yeah, to to the towns that you're working with, are they? Describing the open space in terms of? The use? Passive recreation, or I don't know, anything constraints on it?
Some are, some aren't, um, I had one community that was trying to put a restriction on the open space, but it was quite. Uh, how it could be used. Uh, that it could not be used for, it's a septic community, so it could not be used for septic. Uh, but it, that was quite onerous, given their requirements, so we um discussed some options back and forth. Others are doing this, that there has to have a common outdoor space, um. Uh, that can be accessible to uh residents, uh, some of them are doing the landscaping requirements that you have. Or, you know, similar idea that the open space has to be landscaped. Um, places with larger lots could uh consider um. That idea of passive recreation, and and actually, that's where we ended up. With the one that had the uh requirements on the um septic. Is that uh it could potentially be used, uh, some of the open space could be used for passive recreation. Around that. So again, it it varies on the goals, uh, some communities are are thinking about things like cluster development, where you. Place the buildings closer together, so they have a meaningful open space, that's actually one way in which. Uh, multifamily can contribute to increased open space, because rather than having. Individual houses on individual lots, you push the units closer together and have less developed land. Um, but that might require a different type of zoning from the one that you're looking at.
Has anybody passed anything yet, or is again the um? Just everybody's working on it that you're you're working with, the towns that you're working with?
Most are working on it, uh, it's possible that Lexington or Newton that passed theirs last year. Might have some open space requirements to look at. I don't remember off the top of my head.
It's helpful.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, trying to put something in there, yeah.
Yeah, I've been working with the commuter rail and the adjacent communities um recently, and they're either going for a spring or in some cases a fall town meeting.
Yep.
So.
Being for Mimi to come back. She must be there somewhere, um. So we are on, um. Building infill lots number seven. And originally, we had taken out, um. Uh, line three there, section one seventy four dash ten, three E dimensional standards, we should probably put that back, cuz we're using the table. And we're not. Yeah. So keep that. Okay, um, we didn't have anything until we get down to number nine waivers. Simply, um. Subject to compliance with compliance guidelines, so we didn't. We don't know, we don't have. Compliance guidelines.
Oh, those are EO HLC's compliance guidelines, so. Yeah.
So we should put EO HLC. Compliance guidelines there. Okay. And then, um, Site Plan Review Authority replaced with Planning Board. And. That's it for that section, so, okay, that makes sense. Okay. And then on to section H affordability. Um, when we got down to part two. Um, here's where, um. Remove the mixed use. In the first line, residential and mixed use, so it should just be all residential developments. Yeah, right there. And then, um, I think you had with ten or more. And, um, if you use. Um. The same criteria like downtown district. If you use five units. Five or more dwelling units. Ensures you one unit. It comes up with a point five and you round up to one. Um, I think that was. Was that ten percent? It's twelve and a half.
So you're limited to ten percent. Uh, you can't go out to twelve and a half percent unless you do an economic feasibility analysis.
Yeah, but our downtown is twelve and a half, that's just the reference there, but it's ten.
Right, yeah.
Here is ten percent.
So it's ten units or or more? Like a state requirement, or can we do less than required affordable?
You can do less than required affordable, but I'm not seeing ten, oh, there is a ten percent, okay. Yep, I just wanted to make sure that that ten percent was there. Um, under four, so. Now you can do, cuz you can do ten percent of units.
So five is a- appropriate.
Yeah, I remember too, yeah, so you've got a fractional unit shall be rounded down, so ten percent of five. Units is gonna be a half unit.
Where does it say rounded down?
Can we round them up?
Oh, under number four, the provision says a fractional unit should be rounded down, we can say rounded up, right?
Uh, yeah, when we wrote this, uh, HLC was saying that you couldn't round down, I have since heard that rounded up is okay. So.
Especially cuz we're specifying five or more, that meets the ten percent. Right, okay, okay, so that would be up. So Marnie, you saw, okay, good.
Um, I'm on it, Karina.
Um, I think under number three, we have to spell out, um, go back, oh, we did, okay. So that's just spelling out what EO HLC stands for, and that should probably be a capital C. Under communities. Okay. Um. And. Do we need to say that, um, the subsidized housing inventory is, the acronym is SHI at the end there, or is that understood?
Did you define it above?
We've referenced SHI, but we didn't define it above. So I think.
Yeah.
We should either.
Cuz you took, you took that definition out, right?
Um, did we? Now I don't remember.
Remember, I can't remember either.
We did take it out. We took it out, but so where it says subsidized housing, we should ha- say parentheses A S H I, cuz a lot of people refer to it as that. It's kind of the slang. Uh, we could add the definition right there if we wanted to, but if it if, I think it's a understood, right?
Yeah, put, if you're gonna do definitions, put them in the definition section, don't bury them in the text.
Yeah, okay, so that's good.
We beat that horse. It's dead.
And then, um, the next thing we had was under section I, site plan review. Keep going, it's the complete next section after number five, right there. Um. It said, um, with more than ten units, applicability. So the requirements of site plan review are applicable to any multifamily development within the MC- MCOD. Right? Unless modified below, um, and it's by the planning board again. Instead of permitting authority on the second to last line.
So we put everything as site plan, so if it's only like a a multi hu- housing unit, and it's only like three. It doesn't require a major site plan.
It do- it it requires site plan. Whether it's minor or major. Depends on site plan approval definition of major and minor.
Right, so all this MCOD is subject to major site plan approval, isn't it?
In our. Unless it's two thousand square feet.
Is a threshold, yeah.
Okay.
Or adds less than five parking spaces.
So don't you think that we should be? Cuz it's ten units, is that just a random number versus using?
Oh, that's supposed to be taken out.
We're gonna take that out.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, I I went over that too fast, so it should say that. The requirements of one seventy four ten site plan review are applicable to any multifamily development within the MCOD.
Got it.
Unless modified below, and then right there on the, um. Keep going, it says, an application for site plan review should be reviewed by the planning board in that same number one.
Yep.
In section number one, second to last line. End of the second line, second to last line, should say planning board instead of permitting authority.
So this is not set up for a major or minor site plan review, this is just straight cited, cuz it's not pointing to any other section. So anything, uh, to three family, two duplexes. Um, you know, twenty five unit, whatever comes up is going to get reviewed under the site plan review, just so you know.
Right, and it's in our site plan review section that it differentiates a minor and a major based on square footage. Two thousand square feet or the number of parking spaces.
Right, but this doesn't refer to your site plan review, so. Right, so if if you want those to apply.
The requirements is one seventy four dash ten.
I'm sorry.
That's okay, it's a long night.
Yeah.
Don't worry. You do.
Well, this is, this is one seventy four dash ten. Point three.
Well, no, this is referring to that, um, the requirements of our site plan review are applicable to MOCD.
I was just looking for the section of your zoning that is site plan review to make sure I've got the right reference there.
Excuse me.
There it is, yep, 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 I see it, sorry, one seven four dot ten is site plan review, or site plan approval, actually, that should say not site plan review. Of the wrong, that's what was throwing me. Right.
Yeah. Those are say site plan approval?
Yeah, you refer to site plan approval, so that set that third line down. What says applica- applica- well, you can leave it for application for site plan review, cuz the section is site plan review. But your one, one, one seven four dot ten is site plan approval.
Right, so it should say site plan approval, right, okay.
In both places, or?
No, no, you're fine. If you refuse, yeah, refers to this, the, to refers to I. So I think you should be okay.
Okay. Then, um, under site plan approval. Site plan will use is the permitting you should be granted upon determination. Yeah, that's just, um, putting planning board in there, and then down to, um, number two B. Um, at the very end here, um. The project as described in the application meets the development standard set forth in one seventy two ten three. G develop, general development standards and the requirements of section. One seventy four dash ten, three D one, should that say and one seventy four dash ten?
Uh, D one, hang on, I just have to pull it back. D one. Is, um. Well, that's, that's just the permitted uses, so.
Yeah, the project described. In application meets the development.
I think, I think you're right, I think it's one seventy four dash ten.
It should be added there and one seventy four dash ten, right?
Yeah.
Okay. It's like all the criteria is gonna be.
Yes.
As long as it's not a special, right?
Good, right.
And then, um. Under section three, you already changed it to planning board. Right there. And then severability, that's just standard. Language. And then our Warren article has to address that the zoning map will be updated, so this is the bylaw, but the Warren article will have a piece. In there, okay. All right. Anyb- and Mimi, I give it back to you.
Thank you, Emily. This was very, very helpful.
Emily, thank you very much.
I'm glad the timing worked out, so.
Um, Mimi and Karina, thank you for all of the really the effort, the diligence back and forth, because this is a monstrosity. So Emily, thanks for the help. I will share this back with you guys. So this is I've saved as a master right now. I think you saw what I've done, but if like I can clear up the the comments if they've been cleared and just leave with what the remaining things were listed. Would that be?
That'd be fabulous.
Good for you. Okay. Are you comfortable if I do that in the morning? Versus right now?
No, I want it by one AM so I can get back on it.
Marty, real quick, on the page you have open under three right there, see at the bottom of the screen, it says three, two L D dash one.
Yeah.
Is that L Z?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I just didn't want to get confused later. Okay.
All right. If you want me to look at another draft, I'm happy to do so.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah.
Yes.
So my question for the board is, do you think that we're ready for town meeting on March twenty-third? Or do you think we should keep working and bring this to a fall when we're more prepared? My concern is that the select board wants this tomorrow. And if we put forth this bylaw and we go to town meeting and amend it on town meeting floor. That's a, that's a death kill.
We, they want the 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 final bylaw tomorrow?
Yeah.
At least a draft.
No. No, for print in the warrant tomorrow.
Yeah, because they we don't want amendments on the floor. That's that will make it very difficult. The closer we are to what you want, where you want to be.
Four and a half weeks. Like, do they know what modern print press is now? Like, it's called they they really don't need this. Do they really? Who's?
Because it has to go. I I think the part of the reasoning is they need it to. Yeah, and it has to go to town council, and then the the select board needs to vote and sign the warrant. And then that's it. It goes to print. So.
And that's the twenty-seventh that they're signing it.
Yeah, that's next Tuesday.
So that doesn't really give us a chance to give a best shot for March twenty-third.
That's what I'm
We absolutely need a fall meeting. I'm a little worried about that.
So I was thinking we can just continue on working, do more public outreach, then maybe we can even do design guidelines if we're if the fall is our is our goal.
I think we're better off trying to put something on the warrant now. Because if it doesn't pass for some reason, I mean, we need this town meeting to make an assessment of what changes need to be made for the fall.
So I just think that if we go and we're don't look like we're prepared and we're making all kinds of changes on the fly, it doesn't look good for for the bylaw. And this, and the other thing is, so if we go to the fall and it doesn't pass, then we lose we lose the grants that we don't get any funding from anyway. And I don't think that the if we're still working on it and still trying to get it passed, do you think the state's going to come after us?
Yeah, there's a, there's an issue with not getting the vote. We have it done. But it doesn't pass. I don't know what happens then.
My guess is you'd go to the next town meeting. So if it doesn't pass special town meeting, you either have another special meeting, special town meeting, other than the fall one. Or you wait till the spring. You know, I mean, you can you can call a special town meeting, I would imagine, not just in the fall.
Yeah, anytime.
Can we request March one? And give us some time to rework this, have Emily do another review and make sure like we're pretty comfortable with where it's at. And if they say no, then we say, okay, we'll wait. But if if they will give us at least till March first.
What, to get them the bylaw?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think I think that's fair. And Andrew Dennington said he would wait as long as he possibly could. So let's check with him. March first.
I feel like we need to hear what the town voters feel about the what is the mood and what do we need to deal with in the next coming months to be able to make if it doesn't pass. So I feel very strongly that we should have something in front of town meeting. I'm just one.
Yeah, I feel like the select board and the town administrator need to give us an extension on this.
Or or even at town meeting, we could do a presentation, take some questions. That would help. And at town meeting, you're going to be speaking to all the people that are going to be at the next town meeting, invite them to participate in our open sessions or whatever we're going to do. I mean, the public outreach is going to continue. And if you can announce that, even just that at town meeting, you're going to have people coming.
Is it acceptable to have an addendum to the warrant if we miss the deadline?
You do a special within the town meeting.
And what would be the, yeah, I remember talking to you about that, Colleen. What would be the deadline? For that, so say we miss the warrant, but say we're ready and prepared to have something. You know, this is coming along. It's in pretty good shape. The presentation was awesome. I mean, it's going to come along. How would that? What would our deadline be for that, do you think?
I think it only takes two weeks to post a town, a special. I I will look into it, but that's what I recall was two weeks.
We would need to get signatures or no?
No, you just ask. We just ask to call a special town meeting.
So before we go down that path, why don't we try to get it like an extension to March first before submitting the bylaw? If we don't get the extension, then we may.
We have asked for presentation.
I'm in agreement with you in principle on the need to present this at the next, at the ATM, but same time, we don't want to throw it out there and then have it like, you know, some kind of postponement that would like an extended, you know, s- suspension of of bringing it back.
Yeah, if the board isn't prepared, I mean, there's no reason to bring it forward because you need to be really comfortable with this and be able to answer everything.
Emily, does that March first give you enough time to, if we give edits and get you know, our review? I know we have some diligence that we have to do on our side. Does it give you enough time to maybe work in a review?
Absolutely. I'll put that as a priority on my calendar.
Thank you. Yeah, I I would vote for an extension. And if they absolutely can't do that, if we would need to know tomorrow if they can grant that extension. And then I think we just work hard because I think we're in a pretty good. I think the board is very comfortable with the bylaw and what all the issues are. It's it's just making sure we're comfortable with the draft bylaw. The language in it and being able to, you know, speak to it. But I think our presentation is, you know, three quarters of the way done. We're still holding public hearings.
We're just starting.
Oh, sorry.
Public hearing will open on the twenty-sixth.
Yeah, I just can't. It's incredible to me that the the expectation would be that we would have the warrant ready by law before we've had the first public hearing.
Yeah, that's a problem.
In this case, I understand in in norm, under normal circumstances, that's okay, but this is a whole different thing.
If you can get me your changes, say by Thursday morning at the latest, I can get them back to you on Friday. That works. So so you have them before your public hearing. If you'd rather have your public hearing first and then let me look at another version after that. Uh, I do have. Yeah, I do have some public meetings next week, but I could also turn it around after that, but but I'd be happy to get it to you on Friday.
Mimi, what do you think?
I don't know. Do you think we should wait and see if there are any changes proposed in our first hearing?
Well, if the wait, we first thing we need is the extension.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That's what I
I agree. Oh, yes, I agree.
I mean, what happens after that is sort of you know, we're going to take it from there.
So March first would give me way less heartburn.
Yeah.
At least would have one public hearing under our belt. I I don't feel comfortable submitting a final bylaw before we've even had a public hearing.
So what's the best way for us to communicate that to Purple and Talman and?
I'm writing the email right now.
Okay.
So to who? To Mark Purple and Andrew Dennington?
Yeah, that, yes, that was all I was gonna copy.
And everybody, I mean, there's nobody on the board that disagrees with this, right?
No.
Okay.
And then if it's no, we need to revisit again.
Yeah. If they say nope, too bad, then our public hearings on Monday, right, the twenty-sixth? So by then we'll know where we stand. Even if we don't deliberate between now and then.
So if we got something to you on the twenty-seventh, Emily, would you be able to turn that around? Or should we just give changes we have now?
You're on mute, Emily.
Just realized that. Yeah, if you gave it to me on the twenty-seventh, I should be able to turn it around fairly quickly. Certainly before March first, probably even by the twenty, by the end of the day, twenty-eighth.
That would be fabulous.
Okay, so I will get this to you in the morning.
As in one AM?
Maybe like eight.
Which is probably is the same to me.
If I can go to bed soon.
Okay.
Um, I'll clean it up and then you'll have a master version. And so what I'm hearing is we're not going to send a new version to Emily for this week. We're going to wait until the public hearing and get some feedback. Yeah, I think that makes sense.
My, that's a good idea. That's my suggestion.
I I I would agree with that. That makes sense.
Wait, just recap. Marty, you're going to do the revised draft to Emily tomorrow?
No, I'm sending it to me.
Twice. Yeah, to Mimi. Okay.
And that's gonna and you. And there's a couple of things we need to look about, like language and stuff, but we're going to bring that to the public hearing on Monday.
All right, then to public hearing on two twenty-sixth and then to then to Emily on on the twenty-seventh. Two twenty-seven, twenty-four for review. Okay. And that's the select board gives us an extension or if they agree.
I'm available to help with the affordability, what's the open? There was two pieces there. Looking at design guidelines and open space. If you need it, Mimi, I can do some digging and looking around also, send you what I find in terms of you know, seeing if we want to work some of that in. Those are the two, right? Open space and design guidelines.
Yep.
And I think that if we don't if the select board can't grant us, I'm going to do a like go down the rabbit hole for a second. If they can't grant us, let's say an extension for whatever reason, I think we should look at the special town meeting within the town meeting. And just be aware of what those timelines are because that would be our fallback position. And maybe we wouldn't make that one either, but I think we should know what what those are. If it's two weeks, that gives us probably an extra week.
Yeah, that seems like the logical next step.
Yeah.
As a plan B.
Maybe, and I think you go first. I'm not sure about that, but I think if you have a special within a town meeting, the special goes first. So it's it's some different things. I'm not hundred percent sure about that. I think I've only done participated in that one time.
Usually it's right in the middle, kind of right in the middle.
It's in the middle?
Yeah, you would you would sign it up and say at noon, you would open it up and take it. You put a time on it, just like a public hearing.
Okay, let's hope we get the extension though, but I think it'd be just good to know what that looks like.
And Colleen, you're drafting that email to Mark Purple and Andrew Dennington?
Yep.
And just copy me and Mimi?
I got you both on there.
And then okay.
Anything else?
No, super productive meeting.
Thank you all.
Yeah.
Good work.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Emily. Really appreciate it.
My pleasure. I look forward to receiving something from you early next week. We'll turn it around, get you in a good position.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Oh, we have to adjourn, don't we?
Do I have a motion to adjourn? In a second?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Karina is discussing.
No, go ahead. I just have to have Colleen after before she goes.
I won't shut down the meeting. I'll just get everybody else out. Go ahead.
Seeing none, all in favor, Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes.
Hulihan, yes?
Tamiuri, yes.
Thank you, everyone.
Just stop the recording, Colleen. Just stop the recording. Don't forget.
Everybody.